...of August 12, 2014, Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Glad to see everyone's out tonight in attending. The first thing on the agenda, we'll have the invocation, give them a Roger Crigger of the Rural Retreat Penicost Alphons Church, and please remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
To you, Board, I don't get to come that often, but I consider it an honor and privilege to be here tonight. And as a leader myself, not in the capacity that you are, but I do appreciate the job that you do. And I know a better way to start the meeting night than in prayer, so let us go to prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're truly grateful unto you for your many blessings upon us. Thank you for your blessings this day. And Father, we thank you for the representatives of this board that's represented here tonight, and we just thank you for each one of them. We pray that you will give them wisdom and guidance in all that they do this evening. All the participants tonight, truly just bless them and everything that's done tonight. Father, we want to do it for your glory and for your honor, and to further the kingdom and proceed in the community, dear Father, we can help it to grow, that it be satisfactory even in your eyes. So, Father, we give praise and thanks unto you, and we humbly ask your guidance, as we ask it in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks, everyone, for attending the meeting tonight. We'll move on with the agenda, the first item on the agenda is the public hearing. With County Board of Supervisor will conduct a public hearing, present to the Code of Virginia and amendment thereto, to hear comments on With County withdrawn from the Smithwith Airport Commission. The public hearing will be held at 7:05 PM Tuesday, August 12, 2014, in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withville, Virginia, by orders of the With County Board of Supervisors, Salead Dalton, County Administrator. Before we get started into the public hearing, there'll be a time limit. What is it, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes per individual, five minutes per group, if you're representing the group. Mr. Hall will call your name. Please, when you get up, state your name and address, and we'll start into the public hearing now, and I'll ask Mr. Hall to call the first name.
Okay, I'll call your name. I'll keep the time up here, so that you'll have an idea of how long you have left to speak. Our first speaker that signed up is Will Leonard.
I'm Wilson Leonard. I'm the Smith County Representative to the Airport Commission, currently serving as Chairman. I live at 525 St. James Road, Chilhawley, Virginia. I came here before, and we went over all the economic aspects and gave you packages and everything a year ago. I'm not even going to get into that tonight. I don't think there's any question that the airport is an asset to this area of Virginia, this county, the next county, and the area surrounding it. So, I'm not even, there's no justification there on my part. The question that we're addressing is it worth $62,000 to With County to continue to support the airport? And actually, it's $47,000, because part of the money that you pay goes for the JIDA loan, which has four more years, and then it's dead, it's over with. At that time, the amount would retract back to whatever the budget calls for at that time. So, that's the only question we're here to answer. There are a lot of people here to speak, and they're going to speak to other points. In the news article that was printed, for example, you had a meeting back several months ago where you got the entities together. You did not invite anybody from the Airport Commission there. We were excluded. To this day, I have no idea what went on at that meeting. I don't know what the results of it was. Supposedly, it was to be to further the airport, improve it, and do it, and so forth, but we can't respond to something that we get no information on. That's one. To the best of my knowledge, no one's been out to the airport. No one's been out there to walk over it, talk to us, look at it. I'm more than willing at any time I have done so, by the way, with representatives both from Smith County and from Marion, sat down with them and gone through many items and explained stuff to them. But this board, to my knowledge, I've not seen any of you out there to do this. The communication's all been one way. We've sent you information, every month you get a packet. We get nothing back. Mr. Frank Slaven, who will be speaking, is your representative. He attends every commission meeting. There's nothing come down from With County that was a question asked that needed an answer. He will speak to that. Fuel prices. Yes, I agree with you. The fuel price is too low. I'm one member on the commission. We have to deal with the other members, and I'm sure it's going to be kicked up. We did, in fact, increase the profit margin by 20 cents after the last meeting. As far as hangar rent goes, we're down three on our inventory now. We've got empty spaces. Raise the hangar price now, and you may drive more out. That doesn't do you any good. That's not good business. I know there's a comparison made to New River Valley. New River Valley's $185 rental fee is for their old tea hangers. We don't have tea hangers. Their new tea hangers is $250. Their community hangers, which we have, is right in line with our hangers. So, that's the answer to those comments that were made in there. Mike Edwards, who's also here, is going to speak. He represents Town Marion, is a new man on the commission. He is taking over the website, and he is very interested in developing public relations, tying it into newspapers, tourism, and all this, and he'll go into that in great detail. That is part of our plan to move forward. The last four years has been spent repairing the airport, getting it to where it should have been, what wasn't. If you come out there and take a look around, you're going to see how clean and nice it is now, how well we've protected our infrastructure, and that's what we've been spending our time and money on. The airport will not close if you withdraw your support. It will still stay there. You will still continue to benefit from the aircraft that come in there and the people that come into this county, which is about 65% of the business traffic that comes in, comes into With County. We know that. Another thing on this zoning ordinance is this thing with the condemning land. The airport is not expanding. We're going to purchase an acre off the end of one runway to put in a VASI system. This is a visual approach slope indicator, which is a safety light system that tells you on the right glide slope coming in. There's no contention over this purchase. The people in it, they're ready to sell the land. It's in Smith County. It has nothing to do with With County at this point in time. Everything else we're purchasing is air. There are two zoning ordinance in effect, Smith County and With County, that says trees and anything else sticking up in there must be cut down. We're offering to pay the people to do this now, and to pay to get it done, and then give them money on top of that. If they do not concur, and we will be going to court on some of those, if they do not concur, it does not matter, because we will then go to the ordinance, and they'll do it at their own cost. And if you do withdraw support, you need to be aware of that little sheet I gave you, is that there are certain things you will still be financially responsible for, for a period of 18 years from now. So, there'll still be bills coming down to With County that need to be paid. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frank Slaven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Could be here. I think I should start out by saying that I don't have any vested interest in this matter. My own airplane, I sold a few years ago. I haven't flown in three or four years. But I am your representative on the Airport Commission, and so my concern is with the benefit to aviation generally and to With County in particular. It is, as I think has been pointed out, true that most of the present users of the airport are business personnel rather than individuals. There are some folks who still fly out of Mountain Empire, who have based their airplanes there for pleasure use rather than commercial. My concern is that there are statements that have been made that are either false or misleading. Let me detail some of them for you. First off, we've been accused of failing to furnish information. That's ridiculous. Copies of the minutes of the board of the commission meetings, including the fuel pricing guidelines, the comparison to all other fuel prices in southwest Virginia, as well as our detailed income and expense figures, have been made part of your packet every month, or at least furnished to the county administration. We are accused of not furnishing better information. That, too, is ridiculous. How could it be better than the facts themselves? You've said you're unable to tell who's using the airport. Well, you have a log of every takeoff and landing that indicates who it is, where they're from, who's the owner of the aircraft, and what the nature of their visit might be. In addition, as I think Mr. Leonard just said, board members have been invited to attend commission meetings. To my knowledge, when I've been present, no member of this board has ever attended. We've been accused of not cooperating in our fuel pricing. We have always made this as a business decision, and set a profit margin, and tried to stick to it based upon the wholesale price of fuel to us. It was done to try to be competitive. If you set your prices higher than everybody else, no one will buy fuel. If you set them the same, they have no reason to continue to stop at Mountain Empire. If we do that, we will lose revenue. We've been told that we failed to curtail expenditures. We furnish income and expense statements. If you'll actually look at them, it will be clear that we run a pretty lean operation as it is. The budgets are balanced, the audits have been done, and sponsor contributions have been essentially the same for some years. What would you cut? Where would you do it? You deal with budget issues. You know what the difficulty is in that. We've been told that we don't give satisfactory answers to the questions. Well, we furnish the information. What are the questions? I am your representative. When have you told me what you want done? No member of this board has ever said one word to me about what I should do at a meeting of the commission. You may not like the answers, but you've had them. Don't tell us you are not being told what we're doing. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Edwards.
My name is Mike Edwards. I'm the Marion representative to the board of the Airport Commission. I'm the new kid on the block, so to speak. I've joined the Airport Commission over the last three months. And when I first came into the Marion area here, when I went by that airport, I thought I'd died and gone to heaven. Here was an airport with a huge runway, huge potential out there. This airport, right now, and I'm switching gears, I'm not going to go in with what everybody else has said, but to tell you that you've got an asset there, that if you give up on that asset, you're giving up on something that's going to eventually get better and better and better over the years to come. As Will Leonard has said, I'm going to be the public relations person. I'm going to be in charge of the website. We're going to increase the visibility of that airport and try to turn the corner a little bit better with tourism, to make it a tourist destination. If we take a look at it being a tourist destination, you're going to have that local multiplier effect that's going to affect everybody in every community. Every dollar that's spent is going to trickle down to the other entities that support the area. There's going to be things that we hope to be able to bring in through here that will be tourism in general, that will take care of things like car clubs, motorcycle touring, fly fishing, theaters, hiking, wineries, community craft and art shows, and kayaking, things that people like in this community area up here, things that southwest Virginia holds the key to a vast majority of money that can come into this community. We can support it once we make that airport known, and make the visibility out there known, and give the local support, which we hope that you will continue to give us as you've done over the last 50 years. This airport, as I said, has got the fourth longest runway here for a GA airport. The idea now is to talk to people like Legion Air, talk to people like, oh, I just forgot the other airline, with the small feeder aircraft, with the various airports that are around here that have feeder aircrafts that are coming in US Airways. That's the other one. Is to talk to them to be able to say, okay, there is a reason to take people out of this airport, there's a reason to bring people into this airport. With the people coming from the college at Emory and Henry, moving into the area of Marion, we're going to have a new influx of people that are going to be coming in, people that are going to be able to fly in, people that have money, people that are going to spend money here. One of your local entities that's going to benefit from all of this is going to be Withville Harley-Davidson. They're going to be renting motorcycles for back of the dragon and for the claw of the dragon. So, tourism means dollars, dollars fuel the economy of southwest Virginia, and Mountain Empire is working to increase the visibility of the value of this airport with the governance by the Airport Commission that is made up of dedicated professionals. I'm very pleased to be working with these guys, and we operate on a very limited budget, and we're making it go. So, we continually look forward to your support. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Elmore.
My name's Don Elmore, 4267 Pepper's Ferry Road, Withville, Virginia. I am the representative for Withville for the Smithwith Airport Commission. I'm going to speak not from the commission standpoint, from the citizen's standpoint. I'm going to put on my metaphorical hat here. I'm going to put on my isolationist hat, and I'm going to grab that isolationist hat, and I'm going to look at this budget for With County. All right. I've been in this county for 20 years. Here's $271,951 for volunteer fire departments. Fire trucks never been to my house. Why do I need that? Here's $118,000 for rescue squads. Rescue squads never been to my house in 20 years. Why do I need that? I don't need that. Let's cut those budgets. Let's cut them 50%. The Rural Retreat Lake Swimming Pool, $48,249. I've never even put my big toe in that swimming pool. Matter of fact, I don't think I've ever even seen that swimming pool in 20 years. Why do we need that? We don't need that. All right. Here's $62,000 to the airport. And, you know, only $47,000 of that is actual operations. The other part of that is debt reduction. Why do we need that airport? Okay, now, I'm going to take my isolationist hat off, and I'm going to put my good citizen hat on. Now, as a good citizen of this county, I know the value of each one of these services. I know that it's part of the infrastructure of this county. It's part of the economic inflow. It's part of the web and weave of what makes With County good, what makes it a good place to live, what makes it an attractive place for businesses. Now, the airport provides a great gateway for the business community, a gateway for tourism, a gateway for general aviation. Now, there's no reason that I see that we would want to treat that any differently than we do any of our other infrastructure in this county. And, you know, if one of your family members was seriously injured or seriously ill, and you were waiting on an airplane to take you to Johns Hopkins, or to Duke University, or to Cleveland Clinic, and that airplane's going to land at Marion, and 15 minutes makes a big difference, sometimes in life and death situations. So, do you want to be in an ambulance going to New River Valley, or do you want to be in an ambulance going to Mountain Empire Airport? Thank you, gentlemen.
Our next speaker is Curtis Pennington.
I'm from Chilhawley, Virginia. I run Hangar 7 at the airport. Biggest question I have is, Mr. Hale, what determines a good airport? You made the comment in the paper that New River Valley was a better airport. You've never been to the airport but one time, and I know of, so how can you determine what a good airport is? I think before you make comments like that, you should determine what is going on.
Mr. Chairman, you're a knowledgeable person here about maintenance. You're well-known in New River Valley and throughout the area. I realize, and I do look at those flight records at Mr. Slaven, and they look just a little bit better than a doctor writing a prescription, as far as reading, Mr. Slaven. But you brought up airports. Would you care to tell people how you could have landed at Mountain Empire for that medical flight since last Friday? Would you have landed there in this weather?
Yes, sir, I wouldn't, because I'm not a pilot.
All right. We've got a lot of pilots here. How many of them with him? We got one professional pilot that just passed.
I would have landed at that, at the minimums. I think he asked you the question.
I did.
Did you not ask any questions today?
Yeah, he referred to you, and I did.
I'm a professional pilot, and if the weather had been at the landing minimums for the instrument approach, I certainly would have landed there. I deal in the same kind of weather, in the low ceiling and visibility conditions that any airlines leave in and out of Charlotte, North Carolina, or Atlanta, Georgia, or any other airport that has an instrument approach. So, yes, there were plenty of times during the last few days that the weather was flyable at that airport.
Both you guys are professionals. Is the ILS approach at New River Valley the same that you have, or are they equal, for your safety and the flying public's safety?
An ILS approach provides lower minimums normally than a non-precision approach or an RNAV GPS approach. But with the advent of WAS, Wide Area Augmentation System, we now have the capability to have RNAV GPS approaches that will almost match, or sometimes exceed, based on the terrain constraints around an ILS approach, that will bring the airplane down to about the same minimums as an ILS.
Anything else, sir?
Go ahead and continue.
So, I have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Billy, is it Durgan or Dunagan? Billy Dunagan.
Good evening. I'm Billy Dunagan at 557 Apple Valley Road. I represent both Smith County and Marion. I just wanted to say to the board that I'm a recreational pilot.
Excuse me, just one second. We'd like to have everyone's attention, people talking in the back. We hear both voices. If you would, just give the courtesy of the speaker up here, or he can speak.
And I just want to reiterate what some of the other people have said about the airport. I think it would be a mistake for the board not to try to help the airport out. As an educational person, I usually take some of my classes from Chilhawley Elementary up to the airport, and they are very enthusiastic and everything about the airport. And I think it, I think some of them, you know, eventually down the road may have some type of dealing with something to do with airplanes and the businesses that might, I don't know, might be involved with the planes and everything. So, I hope that you all can support it. And then also, no one has mentioned this, on September 21st, I would like to invite all of you all to our fly-in down at the airport. Now, this is a fly-in, and basically what it is, people from around the area will fly their planes in, and we'll set them up for display. So, hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brandon Elmore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to be speaking to you on behalf of Medtrans Corporation and Wings Air Rescue in Marion, Virginia. I'd like to begin my statement with an excerpt from the National Business Aviation Association's Airports Handbook. General aviation airports play an essential role in helping communities and individuals in times of crisis. Not only can general aviation aircraft operate into outlying airports with small and sometimes unpaved runways, but sometimes these airports are the only way to transport food, supplies, medical specialists into a community or region that has been hit by severe weather or a natural disaster. Business aircraft are uniquely suited for the task because of their ability to land locations that are sometimes difficult to reach or inaccessible by larger aircraft, trucks, and automobiles, and many business aircraft operators jump at the opportunity to help those in need. General aviation operators utilize the nation's thousands of non-commercial airports for many humanitarian purposes, including aeromedical flights. From air ambulances to emergency medical evacuations, flights on specially-equipped aircraft that businesses offering to fly cancer and other patients to medical care facilities for free, aeromedical flights are a large and important use of general aviation flights and airports. An example, Superstorm Sandy in October of 2012. Business operators donated their aircraft and time to fly food, medical supplies, water, and other necessities to the communities that were hardest hit. By flying into smaller airports or even helipads, the supplies were able to get to the right area where they were needed. For example, 20 helicopter flights were made from Linden Airport in New Jersey direct to Staten Island University Hospital, delivering over 25,000 pounds of supplies to the medical facility. Now, to bring that into our smaller piece, Wings Air Rescue, and how we service the community, and how the airport's capabilities affect us. Between the months of June and July, Medtrans and Wings Air Rescue has responded to 33 medical requests between With County Hospital and the other EMS agencies within the county. Wings Air Rescue has utilized the hangar facilities at Mountain Empire over 11 times in the last 60 days due to threatening weather since June. In the last 90 days, Wings has conducted seven training flights at the airport, which is a quarterly requirement for us, and has performed, we have also performed extensive maintenance on our aircraft and the hangar facilities there at the airport. The airport, it serves as an emergency recovery airfield for our operation, a designated rapid refueling station, and our only facility to store the aircraft in the event of severe weather. We at Wings Air Rescue and Medtrans, we depend heavily on the airport's weather reporting capabilities. Refueling equipment, personnel, hangar facilities, general facilities, we utilize everything that's on the airfield. Now, to tie that in to the citizens of With County and how to link the funding, the citizens of With County might not see a direct correlation between the funding of the airport and our service to the community. But however, the operational status of the airport does directly affect the capabilities that Wings Air Rescue can provide to the community. That is all.
Howard Bruce is our next speaker.
Thank you for the privilege of getting up and talking with you folks. From a personal standpoint, forget about the business standpoint, from a personal standpoint, I've lived in this area for 20 years. I've lived in six different states. I have flown out of every airport of six states that you can name. When I was offered a job here 20 years ago, first thing I looked at was the airport. Second thing I looked at was the golf course. And they're all within your reach from Rural Retreat. I'm a citizen of Rural Retreat. And I think you look at what's offered from people like Hangar 7. I don't think Curtis spoke to that point about how many people he serves, and how many states that these people come from. And he is one of the driving factors that if he decided to move his business, there'd be a huge hole. And that's possible. So, what you guys do with your money, I couldn't care, but you do for me, or my family, or the people I care about, and I think you do, too. And I would ask that you put the finances up, take care of the people that fly out of there. I think that there's more of an advantage to have the local airport. I've flown out of Dublin several times, and I don't think they're one single bit better than what we are. And I've been flying for 42 years, so I've been in a lot of planes, put in a lot of miles, been a lot of places. It's a pleasure to talk to you folks. If you have any questions, I'm available anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. George Farrell's, next speaker. George Farrell's next speaker.
It's a pleasure and an honor to be able to present in front of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Dr. George Farrell. I live at 775 Loretto Drive. And I'm here in support of continuing funding of the Mountain Empire Airport. I have had a long career, and early in my career, I was an F-14 fighter pilot in naval aviation. After that, I transitioned into an ear, nose, and throat practice where I practiced for 39 years and continued to have a close relationship with aviation. And after that, I have recently transitioned into a leadership role as the LifePoint Regional Medical Director for With County Community Hospital and Clinch Valley Hospital. And we continue to need the services of aviation for corporate availability to the five hospitals associated with LifePoint in this region, including With County Community Hospital. I would like to take this opportunity to cover some of the positive effects of Mountain Empire Airport on the surrounding communities. First is the economic multiplier effect, where business aircraft travel brings marketing, professional, technical service, and support staffers into the area. These individuals in turn spend money on the local economy, and this is referred to as the economic multiplier effect. In terms of essential assets, it provides the ability to move people and goods quickly to and from airports, including fresh fruits, vegetables, overnight mail, and packages. In terms of competitive advantage, airports help keep existing employers in a community and affect new ones. And business developers look for ready access to air transportation. In terms of life-saving services, emergency medical services and air ambulance operators provide critically injured people with timely access to specialized medical treatment at our hospital and the surrounding hospitals. In law enforcement services, federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies use hundreds of airplanes and helicopters to search, apprehend, and transport criminals, protect borders, and provide national security. Agricultural services perform aircraft operations, including gypsy moth control. It also has implications for recreational benefits, where airports play an important role in recreation by providing easy access to vacation and resort destinations. It's because of these positive effects that I'm in favor of continuing support of the Mountain Empire Airport. Thank you.
Lynda Meyer is our next speaker.
Good evening, gentlemen. Lynda Meyer from Speedwell. Mr. Edwards certainly has plans. He sounds like he's got his act together. You've decided to refund the joint IDA without this kind of response or information. Perhaps this should be rethought. And you gentlemen all know that I walk around with the county budget, and there's certainly plenty of spaces that I have redlined, which I had hoped you would do, but you haven't. So, perhaps in light of the controversy, you should rethink. Perhaps there is some way to reallocate some funds. Perhaps you could dive into the money that we throw into Progress Park and reorganize it a little. I certainly support the Wings Initiative. That is a great asset to the community. And I think we need communication, and I think you guys better rethink this for the benefit of the county, perhaps. I'm on the fence. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Ron Shirok.
Ron Shirok, 515 Century Court, Withfull. I've only been in this area since 2001, but I speak from a standpoint as military and as a civilian. I've been flying for almost 60 years. And I can tell you from a personal problem we had in Washington about 40 years ago, where a national airport, which is essential to the national government, needed refurbishing, needed overhaul. Well, the money we needed was millions and millions of dollars to do this. So, they formed a airport commission, floated municipal bonds. The bonds were paid off, 20-year bonds were paid off at 10 years. After the airport was renovated, it was a moneymaker. And it's certainly essential to the operation of Washington, just as well as Mount Empire is essential to Withfull and its citizens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and I can't make out the first name, Kukoffis. I apologize if I got that wrong.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Arch Kukoffis. I live at 155 Citizens Road in Smith County. However, I am associated with this airport for a longer period of time than I have been here. I was a former manager of the airport from 2000 to sometime around 2005. And I am fully aware of what the value of this airport is to both of the counties. I operated a business. I was the FBO. Mr. Pennington, who has an excellent representation outside of the repor- my tongue got around my teeth. Mr. Pennington has an excellent reputation, far beyond this airport, that I'm sure he's not aware of. Mr. Burkett is an excellent person to have as a manager. He did a lot of good work for our airport when his father was alive. And I appreciated it all when I was there. The airport has an equal opportunity between these two counties. About 50% of the business came from each county that I did, and I shipped a lot of freight out of that airport. It is a necessary part of the transportation organization in this county. You have a highway that goes right past it. You have a railroad that's very, very busy, and it goes not too far from it. But the airport is a vital link to the national transportation system. If you're there for any length of time, you will notice that it does have a lot of traffic. It entertains traffic from the federal government with the practice on their tilt wings and their tilt rotors. I know because I see them over at my house all the time. I cannot imagine what the loss would be to With County and Smith County with some of the support that is necessary to maintain the airport in its present condition. And is that what I've got left, or is that what I've used?
It's what you have left, sir.
Thank you, because I'm well-known for not shutting up. It is an important part of our infrastructure. As I said, I was a manager there for over five years. I made a terrible mistake when I left, but I did it. I realized it, and I came back, and I find that the airport is still in good hands. I think it should remain in good hands, and I'm hoping that With County will continue to support the airport as well as Smith County. They need help always. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all the folks that have signed up.
I noticed a couple of people come in after the sign-up board was turned in. Is anyone else would like to speak concerned with public hearing?
Brian Burkett, 290 Burgundy Lane Rural Retreat. I'm also the manager of the airport. Kind of saddened and shocked to learn that With County may be withdrawing their support for a few reasons. I see what comes in and out of that airport on a daily basis. A lot of it is for With County. A lot of it's for Smith County. I have freight, planes come in picking up freight for TRW, Somic America in Withfull. I see planes coming for Pepsi. I see planes come in for a lot of corporations in Smith County, too. But you've got to consider, a lot of people who live in With County work in Smith County as well. So, keep that in mind, too. And also during the day, we have a lot of aircraft come in, and they want something to do. What is there to do around Mountain Empire? Well, ain't a whole lot. So, I try to think of points of interest within, say, 10 miles. Pretty much all of it goes to With County. I'm talking about if they want something to eat, they go to Rural Retreat, Dutch Pantry, McDonald's, Subway, whatever. 90% of it goes to With County if they just want something to eat. We supply them with a car of no cost to them. Whether they buy fuel from us or not that we bought, we let them have our car to go get something to eat. If they want to go fishing, we have people to fly in there to go fishing. They go to Rural Retreat Lake. They could go to Smith, they could go to Hunger Mother if they wanted. Rural Retreat's a lot closer. So, therefore, them going to Rural Retreat Lake, they're going to stop and get something to drink. They're going to stop and maybe get some groceries. Heck, they might spend the night. Where do we go? All right, gentlemen, I've got a whole list of motels that y'all can stay in in Withfull. I send them Hampton, wherever. 90% of the people fly in there that spend the night, a lot of them, they do go to Withfull. And I've seen a lot of military stuff come in in the last few years, and you're going to be seeing a lot more. I'm trying to get a fuel contract set up with them to where it'll be a little bit cheaper for them. Therefore, they'll be buying a whole lot more fuel from us than what they are now. And just the other day, well, it's been a couple of months ago, actually, there was a fire in Speedwell, which is in With County. I don't know if y'all remember it. It was pretty good size. There's a helicopter flew in there. And he was dipping his bucket in a pond over there, and he's putting that fire out, back and forth, back and forth. And he's running out of gas, and he come over to Mountain Empire, and I fueled it while it was still running so he could hurry it and get back over there so it wouldn't spread no more. See, people don't realize some of the things that go on that actually help With County. So, I just ask you to please reconsider and think about. Think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Having no one else signed up and all the speakers that spoke, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, is it permissible for me to ask a question?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Leonard, though. He said that he was going to get an acre of land.
Yes, sir.
For-
It's right off the end of runway.
Is this someone's yard or something?
No, 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 no. This land, nothing can grow or anything. It was under, years ago, it was Evans property. There was a house on it. It was removed. It is on the approach to the runway. Nothing can be built on it. Nothing can be erected on it. No trees can be planted on it. The landowners have already agreed to sell it. It's not a big deal. They're going to put a fence around it. It's .929 acres. To direct myself, what Mr. Hale said about the minimums of landing, this is the whole purpose in purchasing that. This is part of the purpose for this so-called land condemnation, which I hate the word because it's not. It's buying air around the airport. But to answer your question directly, that is going to be a lighting system put in there called BAC. It's a visual approach slope indicator. If you're a pilot coming down the slope down in the runway, this lighting system tells you whether you're good. That is right in the slot. Are you too low or are you too high? It's just visual. In addition, they are going to upgrade, and this is your question. They're going to upgrade the navigation system at the airport, and it will match New River Valley's all day long and all night long. So, that's part of what this program is all about. That's one reason why that bank on the right side of the runway, I mean, right side of I-81, that hill has to be cut down. Belongs to Mr. Musser, who owns land, part of the land in Smith County, part in With County. And that's the reason that hillside has to be cut down, because the system goes in, and it's on the books it's coming. It's whether you continue to support the airport or not. And this is point on my character. It does not matter. The airport's not going away. It's going to stay there. And part of the problem that I have is that, so you withdraw support, and I don't know that you're going to vote that way, and I hope you don't. But you're still going to enjoy the benefits of this. The airport's still going to be improved. And trust me, I have no vested interest in the airport. I own three airplanes. There's not one up there at Mountain Empire Airport. So, I'm just doing service as I was appointed to do with the commission. But that's where we are with the program. And when that system's put in, Mr. Hale, trust me, in fact, we already have people come from New River Valley to buy fuel. Now, I understand we've got a little controversy with fuel prices. They actually come over to I Airport to buy fuel. So, to answer your question, that's the only land that will be purchased at all. And I'll tell you this, unless something very extraordinary happens, there will never be another inch of land bought around the airport. In the first place, it has nowhere to go. It cannot go. It can't go. You've got Highway 11. You can't go I-81. And the terrain does not allow it to go anywhere else off each end of the runway. So, you're stuck with what you've got. But once that's upgraded, once these navigation systems are upgraded, by the way, the runway is scheduled for resurfacing in 2016. We're getting out ahead of the curve, getting a little damage to the runway now. It's beginning to crack crossways. That is not good. The FAA has been down to look at it. They agree. We need to catch it early. Won't cost as much to rehabilitate it, but it'll be resurfaced. This is an ongoing process. I mean, it just keeps the improvements and maintenance and so forth. And what facilities like that is like a highway, a little bit at a time, a little bit at a time. But it gets better and better. We have spent four years, I have, on this commission. I'll be through in December. You won't see me again. We have spent four years correcting things at that airport that should have been corrected years ago. We have upgraded buildings, lighting systems, electrical systems, navigation systems, just about everything on the airport. Plus, there's a new terminal building put down. Didn't have anything to do with that. Came down from Virginia. That goes, it's in there. But that's what's been done. And any of these guys will tell you, it's that airport. I had a DOAV representative flying out, one of the higher muckety-mucks up there. And he said, "This is the cleanest airport in the state of Virginia." Right out of his mouth. I don't know him from Adam. Never met him. He said, "It's one of the cleanest airports in the state of Virginia." So, we're proud of the airport. I am. First time I laid on it, I was like Mike Edwards. "I'm a pilot. I fly around recreation." I said, "My God, in the middle of nowhere is this facility." And I saw it going down I-81. So, it's, I don't know how to answer. It's part of an infrastructure that you have here. It's part of your selling point. If you're on track, industry, tourism, name anything you want to, this progresses you forward in jobs and development of the area. Now, I'm one of those people. My move in the area, I don't want to expand. I want to keep it just like it is. But I also understand and know that that can't happen because you've got children who move away. Why they move away? Because there's no jobs here. Now, we start going backwards from that and say, "Well, why are there no jobs here?" And you keep backing up to the point where, "Well, there's no jobs here because there's nothing that attracts jobs here." And you guys in a unique position, you really are. With County is beautiful. You've got an airport on one side of you. You've got an airport on the other side of you. New River Valley's a little further away. Yes, it's a modern, up-to-date airport. I wouldn't say it's any better, Mr. Hale, and it won't be better. But nevertheless, it is a very nice airport. So, I'm no ardent on my part of that.
Mr. Leonard, could I get you to come up to the podium, please, so that Mike can pick you up good?
You're in a unique position. You can withdraw support, and you're still going to enjoy Mountain Empire Airport. Traffic's still going to come in here. Those people that land there and have businesses, and you've got a book up there with pictures. Brian does this on his own. We haven't told him to do this. He takes pictures of this. He's very interested. There's a man that loves that airport, and he has no wife. So, I'll just say, he loves that airport like his wife. And it probably takes more time than his wife would take from him. He's very dedicated to it.
Leonard, I have a question. The depth engineer that's talking about 900 feet by 150 feet on that ridge over there, what's the estimated cost of that?
You know, they haven't even-
And who's going to be responsible for paying for it?
They pay, 90% of that is paid by the Federal Aviation Administration. Between 5% and 8%- Between 5% and 8% of it is paid by the state of Virginia. Local entities pick up the other amount. So, if, let's say if it's $100,000, then you're talking about us picking up somewhere between 3% and 5%. That particular piece, I don't think, will be $100,000, but it might be to move that amount of dirt. And by the way, that's the only dirt that's going to be disturbed anywhere in this whole process. Let me point out one other thing, too, that'll help clarify this. You have on the books a zoning ordinance. It's called Airport Zoning Ordinance, so does Smith County. Those people are already in violation of that zoning ordinance. The Airport Commission, as it's constituted and authorized by these two counties and two towns, can tomorrow morning call up your zoning administrator and send a letter to him and say, "These people are in violation, serve them a notice to get those trees cut down."
I'm not talking about the trees, I can understand the trees, but how could they be in violation for the mountains, sir?
That's the part of the new, Mr. Hale was asking about, can you come in in the bad weather? The visual, the approach system, the VAC lighting system, which is visual, but also helps when you break out at minimums. The FAA mandatory upgrade to navigation systems around the United States, we're not the only one. When they did the survey and looked out there, because they have to widen that cone just slightly, guess what? The side of the highway's in the way. So that's why it's fallen into this particular grant and program that's going on, so-called land acquisition, easement acquisition. It's got to be cut down, my understanding, between 28 and 30 feet. And then it will be topsoil back, seeded back, look just like pasture. You won't know whatever happened a year from now, but it'll be lower. Right now, it juts up too much. It's just, I can't really explain it in a simpler manner, it's just in the way. And the surprising thing is, not that much of it, but it reaches in a lower, 30 or 40 feet. The engineer that explained it to you up there, Roy Lewis, could tell you better than I could about that, because he's got the specs on it. We don't know how much it'll take simply, because we're not being able to get on the land and survey it. We haven't gotten permission to go on there. So that's what's called an eyeball, highway survey, looking at it like that. But that's the only land disturbed. Everything else are trees, vegetation, there's nothing else disturbed. This thing has got a lot of people excited. I understand, hey, if I own property, well, I feel like they do, too. The fact of the matter is, they're already in violation of the zoning ordinances. This is a one-time deal. We'll pay you money to come in and do what we're going to make you do in the future, after this. It's a one-shot deal. We'll come in, we'll do it, and pay for it, and restore it as good as it can possibly be, not leave any damage to the property or anything. And on top of that, we'll pay you money. And that's an assessed appraised value, called a deterioration of value. And, I mean, if I was a landowner and I'm faced with that, or you tell me, well, I'm in violation of the ordinance, and through or three years from now, you can come back and cite me, and I've got to go out and cut down the trees myself at my own cost, which, by the way, is the way that ordinance works. What do you think I'm going to do? Give me some money. When can you get in there and cut them? Ms. Sherry Hyder is here. She is the attorney that's representing Mountain Empire Airport in these proceedings, if we go forth to so-called, and I hate the word, condemnation. But her firm, and specifically her, will be the one representing this. And we're hoping we never go into any of it. We're hoping we can negotiate our way out of it. But basically, that's what that program is. It's not out to hurt anybody. And we hate that we even have to do any of it. But FAA mandates it. And the FAA owns that airport. We may support it, and you've got the deed to it. But once you take money from the federal government, as you well know, sitting here as administrators, you married it. Okay? And if you withdraw support, you can divorce that lady, but you're going to have to pay child support. You've got four years of IDA loan you're going to have to repay. And that little excerpt I gave you, that is a 40-page handbook called AIP Federal Assurance Grant, Federal Assurance Grant Handbook. It's online, you can see it, FAA.org. And it's a big complication. You're talking about reading, reading doctor's prescriptions, try reading that sucker. But it lays out the fact that wants sponsors accept grants as they come down, accept them. And you do that through the Airport Commission. Once you accept that, you're responsible for all expenses associated with that, your share, local share. And the operation and maintenance of that for 20 years from the acceptance date. We're only 18, we still got about 18 years left on several grants up there. And that includes, by the way, this land condemnation thing, again, which I hate the word, but purchasing these easements around.
Is there any other board member?
Yeah, let's just stick with that a minute, Mr. Leonard. Is the same thing going to apply to the lighting package, and do you have an idea what that's going to cost?
No, sir, I don't. Different, different things with the federal government cost. They pick, some of it, they pick up 90% of, some of it, they pick up 95% of, some of they, the state also usually picks up 3%, 4%, 5%. It just kind of depends on what it is they're doing, it falls into different categories. The federal government's made a move here recently, they backed up on some of the stuff to only 90%. The state, 8%, us, 2%.
Now, going down that road, we're looking at three major expenditures between now and 16. Move that mountain of rock, it's not dirty, it's limestone. That's grown from 12 feet to 14 feet, and you just said 34 feet, and I about fell out of a chair.
No. Their estimate that I saw was between 28 and 30 feet, but it is only an estimate.
Well, it really makes a great place for a rock quarry, so let's get that right. Now, then, in 16, you're going to repave everything, that's more money.
Right.
So, it's not a matter of this little bit of money we're putting in, it just keeps growing. Now, if you had a better business plan that got your fuel in line and could help a little bit, that would make it more palatable, but as long as you can operate and know that the entities are going to pick up the difference, that's not a good business plan.
I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Hale. I agree with you on the fuel pricing, as I've told you, this is the fourth time I've stated that, sitting, I did it a year ago. And I, as I stand here, I feel assured the price of the fuel is going to be bumped up and probably fall in the middle of all the other places around us. There's still one lower than us, Hillsville. That was done by a committee on the commission, okay? I'm not making excuses, I'm explaining how it happened. And that committee sets the fuel prices, because prior to that happening, nobody had any say-so over the fuel. They didn't even know when it was bought, how much it cost or anything else, because the management of the commission at that point, at that time, prior to, never saw fit to share it with the other commission members. So it's understandably, once they got their hands on the reins, they wanted control over it, so they did. We're examining that. The hangar rents, we, we're right in line with everybody else on community hangers. I mean, we really are, because two, three years ago, I wanted to raise them. See, I'm from the flat land. I pay $250 a month for half a hangar, T-hanger, where my plane is, which is why I'm trying to get it out of there. But we pay a lot more down there, we pay a lot more for fuel. But we're up here. And if you go to Tazewell, and if you go to Hillsville, New River Valley's a little larger, Abington's a little larger than that, Grundy's about an hour range, those are the type airports we are. Mountain Empire is strategically located, it really is. Because if you come into Virginia Highlands down there, if you get up to Marion, if you've got 35 miles, you've got the same thing if you come from New River Valley, you've got 30 some-plus miles to get into here. So, Mountain Empire splits the difference between those two, and you're talking about 15 minutes either way. And if someone explained, 15 minutes is very important in a crisis. Now, I'm not going to say on an everyday basis, no. But for business people, they're going to land at the airport nearest to their destination, wherever that is. So, it's already in place, it's modern, it's up to date, it's being maintained, and I agree with you. And I would even say this, if anybody, and I mean anybody, knows a better way to do this stuff, a better way to cost it out, which is working together rather than fighting one another, bring it on. That, I guarantee you, the commission will listen to any ideas anybody brings up. We have scratched our heads and pulled our hair trying to avoid coming back to the entities to request funds for certain little things that go on. And we've managed to scrape together enough money and hold enough money to be able to pay that, you never hear about it. You, we, some of those projects, you never got a bill for your share. We pull it right out of what we had on hand. But we stay close to the vest. There's nobody tossing any money around up there, I can guarantee you that, it's not being done. And we monitor it every month, the audits are out there. I'm telling you guys, you have a good asset there. Don't withdraw support from it, don't get the reputation for backing away from something like this. You don't want that for With County. I'm telling you, I've been in the business of business development, evaluation, location. If you do something like this, you're going to get a mark on your reputation, you can't race off. I guarantee you, it's going to show up. And when people start looking for these businesses, locating businesses' locations, and if they find out that you withdraw support from one of your most valuable assets, they'll take it into consideration before they move in here. I saw it happen in Omaha, Nebraska. I saw a man close down a plant that had 400 people in it, because the town council, meeting at night, made a decision, now, they didn't vote on it, but they made the decision to take a 50-foot wide swath, three and a half miles out down past the county road, and capture his plant. And by the way, it was a national plant. He found out about it, he was actually coming in town to add, expand the plant, add 200 more jobs, but they wanted the taxes off of his facility. This man went down before the town council and spoke to them, and he said the following. "I came into town to add 200 jobs to your base. I just found out that you're going to vote on taking a strip down that highway and closing my plant, so you can get taxed." He says, "So let me tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to close that plant down in 180 days, and I'm going, you can have those 400 jobs back, and I'm going to relocate that plant, don't know the state." And they responded to him and said, "Well, we don't have to do that. We don't have to do that, you know, we can..." He said, "No, no, you don't understand. I already know what your intent is. I already know what your attitude is. I do not want my plant in this area, period." Now, that's a true story, because I was in the service of Omaha, Nebraska when it happened. So, I, again, I don't like to adversary, we're all in this together, and I'm like all the other, I thank every one of you for doing what you're doing. I don't want to be in your shoes. That's why I never ran for it, never seek it. I know you got to be elected, but you got a hell of a job to do. Yeah, I mean, you really do. You're going to get criticism no matter what you do, you can't please everybody, but don't mess this one up. Stay with us, stay with the airport. New River Valley has three counties and four towns financially supporting it. Right now, we've got two towns and two counties. So, they can obviously do a little better than we can do, if they want to. Any other questions? I've done the best-selling job I can do, John. Thank you.
I shouldn't do this. Mr. Elmore.
Could I, like, one short comment, and I'll promise that it'll be short.
Yes, sir.
You will be approached by the money.
Yes, sir.
All right. Federal funds, and, you know, the airports, you know, this money is allocated by the FAA, and you guys dealing federal funds all the time. It's like that big round emblem back there. That's a great big pie. The federal government is going to offer this pie, and somebody's going to eat that whole pie. It's, it's going to be gone, that federal money's going to be gone, just like the runway improvements or the approach improvements to the airport. Now, we're going to take, we're going to take one slice of that pie, all right? Let's say that, let's, just for simplified purposes, that piece of pie costs $100. That's a $100 piece of pie. Now, the government's going to offer us that $100 piece of pie for $3, or $2. Are we going to turn that piece of pie, that $100 piece of pie down for $2? I don't know. That's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmore. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank everybody for coming out. We will consider the comments, and I'm going to ask Mr. Dalton now, if he would set up a meeting with Smith, Chairman, and the county administrator, and the mayor of Marion, and town manager, and Withville Town, mayor and town manager, within the next month sometime.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, the money is in the budget right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, that takes care of the public hearing, we'll move on into our regular agenda. And the next item on the agenda is citizens' time, and I think we have Mr. Crockett, what's you going to speak?
Before we start that, let's take a five-minute recess to the boardroom. I'll call our meeting back to order. Like I said before we went into recess, we'll move on into tonight's agenda. We have citizens' time, and the first one on the list is Mr. Sam Crockett, Treasurer, With County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to bring to you tonight, it's a little early, I know, but it's the PPTRA report that we, y'all have to approve every year before we do the taxes. We're getting the taxes worked up a little early this year, and David's got these numbers worked up for us. Now, I want to do a comparison for you. On the third page back is what we did for 2013, and this is what we did for 2014. This has got the numbers on it of the vehicles that you all wanted that are titled and not registered with DMV. This is one we had to pay $1,500 to get this list. This, this came from Richmond, the people at Withville DMV don't have these cars and stuff on it. I mean, they go back so far, but I had a boat trailer on there in my name that I got rid of 12 years ago. Hoy's got about 20 cars on his, in his name, or they say it. I mean, that's just what it's going to be. But for the cars, the $1,000 or less, down there, you see for 14, we're going to have 19,681 cars. And last year, we had 2,583. And then for between 1,000 and 20,000, you can see what we have right there, those are okay, into 20,000 plus. But we're going to have a total of 46,502 cars to send tax bills out on. That's, you know, almost doubled what we did last year. Well, actually, last year, well, 20 almost doubled, it was 24,908 is what we sent out. But figuring out what the tax increase is going to be, with one penny, it's equaling You know, and the increase, because of the assessed value that I've calculated out, is going to be $529,000. And then divide that by the 17,150, it's going to be like a 31-cent tax increase, because of the PPTRA is going to be reduced that much. Now, we don't mail tax bills out to people with zero tax bills. So we're wasting our time putting these $17,000, 17,000 cars on the tax rolls anyway, to start off with. They'll be on there, but we don't send them a bill, because the state PPTRA pays it. And then we are going to have about additional 4,800 tickets, that's what David's calculated out, that we are going to be mailing out. So there, again, we're going to have to increase our budget on, with our professional services line item, and I don't know how much yet that'll be till we actually send it down there to be printed. So, to me, if we, if we didn't do anything with those 17,098 cars, and go ahead and do the ones for the 1,000 and 2, 20,000, you'd be all right, but 17,000, that's, that's a waste of time and costing the taxpayers of this county a lot of extra money, because it's going to cost them about 31 cents increase. You're not raising the rate, but your policies are raising the taxes, because you're eating up the PPTRA. And it's going to be about equivalent of a $2.57 tax bill this year on cars. And we just had a 19-cent tax increase last year on cars. So I, I personally... had a .19 tax increase last year on cars. So, I personally just think it's pretty high. But I just want to bring that to your attention. And right now, then, the PPTRA is gonna go from 45%, 45.39% down to 36.91%, or 8.48% this drop in the PPTRA. And that's gotta be approved. But I'd like for you to think about, that 17,000 cars, we're not even gonna send them a tax bill anyway. They're just gonna eat up PPTRA. There's no need to have them in the system. Why bog the system now with all those cars you're not gonna do nothing with? DMV can't take them off, 'cause they're not in the records here at DMV. The girls at DMV, they down here, they got about three years' worth of records. And then these 20-year-old cars, or that boat I had, that boat trailer in my name, I'll have to go to Richmond to square that away. And I mean, it's gonna be one hell of a mess, is what it's gonna be for everybody. I'm telling you, it's, we're gonna have a real storm, you know what I mean by that, of people fussing about this. That's all I had to say.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a couple of questions? And, yeah, Mr. Crockett, you were...
Yes, Dr. Hell.
In our, in our ordinance, we really didn't do, and Mr. Dalton, you can help us on this, we really didn't do anything that changed anything that, for the commissioner. I mean, what we found was that the commissioner's office, and I'm not saying Ms. Barker, but for dozens of years, or decades, had not done those, had not sent out or taxed those cars, right? You know, our ordinance didn't change that, did it?
No. When you retracted the title, black, red, registered, whatever it was, you just went to title. That was what you had. We just never forced it.
Right. But that's per the state of Virginia? And what Mr. Crockett's doing, I understand the logic and the, and, you know, and the reason behind that. My question is, is it legal for us to do it? I mean, can we?
Well, I invited the county, I didn't know Sam was coming, but I invited the county attorney to come in, but he had a previous engagement. I guess I have intuition, Sam, you were showing that.
But you understand my question? I mean, you know, by this deal rule or whatever, we can only do what we're legally allowed to do. Are we legally allowed to not to put those cars on now that we've discovered it? I don't know. I'm just trying to, 'cause I don't wanna see anybody's, you know, taxes go up by an effective third one.
I think what Sam is saying, though, not putting words in his mouth, that he believes there's a huge number, like his boat, Mr. McRobb, it's 20 vehicles, 19,000, there's a bunch of vehicles that people really don't own. And you're not gonna send a tax ticket to say you're roading away PPTR money, the vehicles that are really not owned by people in the camp.
Yeah. Right. And how do we prevent that? That's what...
Separate it out and not send the thousand-dollar or less. David can separate that. That's why David's here.
He can separate the vehicles.
He can separate them out. I mean, he's the one that separated and did all this work for you anyway. We got these numbers. But he can separate those out. To me, it's a waste of our time and efforts and costing taxpayers money to deal with those 17,000 cars. They're not valued, have no value to us.
How, okay, the 19,681, it's, are them actual vehicles that's in the county that, but are, they're less, they're valued less of, less than $1,000?
They're valued less than $1,000. I can't tell you if in the county or not. I don't know. The girl in our office had four cars on the list. Two of them, she sold about five or six years ago, and the junk man came and got them. She gave him the title and hauled it off. And they're still on there in her name, in Amy's name. And a lot of people, there could be a lot of people like that.
What we did is, with the information, we've got the information from DMV to download, we valued those out as best we could. Started out with NADA processing. Of course, that only goes back so many years. Then we tried to use the purchase value, the purchase price on the vehicle to try to value them. Other than that, you're getting into very old vehicles, and how do you really value those? Without physically putting eyes on them, you don't know whether it's a frame and a motor sitting in a field somewhere, or if it's a $100,000 Mustang sitting in a garage. You don't know. So, for that, you have to go ahead and assess as a minimum value. Going through that...
But this assessment come from?
This is basically a mathematical assessment done either based on an NADA value...
Who done the assessment? Did y'all send it out and get assessment done?
NADA information, we do download every year. So, there were, where's that list at, Sam? I'll give it to you this...
The last one.
Yeah.
I mean, does it, they send it out to have it assessed?
We do, well, we didn't, we didn't send out this information to be assessed, because it's, most of it's too old to even be picked up on NADA. They're not gonna pick up a vehicle more than, I think, 17 years old. A vehicle is more than 17 years old, they're not gonna value.
Back up on statement there, David. It may be an antique vehicle or something worth $20,000, I don't know, hot rod. It's not a new $20,000 vehicle.
Right.
It's an old vehicle.
Right. It may be, it may be a collectible vehicle or something like that.
It's Corvette.
It ain't no antique yet, but it's getting there.
Well, what year is it?
07.
But we added...
Oh, let's see, that'd have value on it. But, you know, a 67 or, you know, something collector-type car.
In that list that we downloaded, it doesn't say that it's even a Corvette. It says 67 Chevy two-door. That's it. That's what the information states. A lot of these older VIN numbers don't say a whole lot about the model or make of the car either. And to do individual lookups on all those VINS is just, is not something we have the ability to do. We added right at 24,000 vehicles to the system, to personal property. Of those, almost two-thirds of them were assessed to minimum value. And that's including over 1,000 trailers and 14,600 vehicles.
I guess, I understand this. I guess, if I may, Mr. Chairman, it's lots of process. Y'all been processing all that?
Yeah, weeks.
Can we refer to the budget committee and fight these two, and can the attorney, and can the attorney be prepared to discuss?
Yeah, my big question is, I agree, and I, but we can't do anything that's illegal. I just want to make sure that what we're talking about is legal, yeah.
The one thing that I would say, as far as this goes, is that when we were looking at the data, and we actually had, okay, went and looked up my vehicles, you know, after a process, you always go back and look and say, "Okay, well, what happened to me? What happened to this?" I do have a vehicle on there that I know I'm keeping the title for, for a kit car. I'm getting assessed for that, no problem. You know, Sam had a 12-year-old boat trailer he no longer owns. My mom had a, had a car on there that was sold 12, you know, it was sold 10 years, 10-plus years ago. What we noticed is pretty much things that were going to junk dealers are not showing up in the list. Things that are being sold at auction out of state is not, are being, are coming in on this list. They're not being pulled off. DMV's not being notified of vehicles being sold at auction out of state, or they're not, they're not processing the data.
You individually can go to DMV and say, "I no longer, I scrapped it, I sold it."
I don't, I don't know what they, I personally don't know what they can do. I asked Fay about to find that out, and I don't, I do not know what...
She was under the impression that DMV, after about five years, they don't have any, any records much on it, if it hadn't had tags on it for that young. 'Cause like I said, David had to go to Richmond to get this list, pull this list out.
Well, you, I mean, yeah, you can, 'cause I went and got a title for a camper one time, and it was 25 years old.
We probably need to get Ginger up here from DMV to talk to her about it. I mean, 'cause it's not only gonna be us being inundated, it's gonna swamp her office, too. She's gonna be mad at all of us. I mean, really. 'Cause it is, it's gonna be a mess. And how are we gonna get them off? If people don't come in, if you put them on there, they're gonna be on there forever. You're gonna be printing tax tickets and all that stuff forever.
Send them the tax bill. They never gonna come in.
Don't know any about it.
Well, do you wanna pay the postage on 17,000 letters to smell them out, though? I mean, you gotta look at it that way, too.
I don't want some.
I mean, I don't think, I think the 17,000, we scratch those off and go on and send the others. You know, I think we'd be all right, personally. It'd be more beneficial to the county. I mean, not mess with that 17,000 cars that aren't gonna do anything but eat up your PPTRA money. That's my point. I mean, I think we're, we end up gouging the citizens real bad on this. And that, that's all I had. I just wanted to bring that up, 'cause we started working on this stuff, trying to get ready to do the tax tickets.
What is value for trailers, $100, and for cars, $30? We have budget meeting this time. You can go query on all those, break them out.
Sure. I've already, I've already got.
You've already got that. Pretty well.
I'm ready.
I agree with you.
You're welcome. Thank y'all. Appreciate you listening to me.
We're saying...
No, I am thoroughly confused.
Do what?
I said, "No, I am thoroughly confused."
I can understand what he's saying.
I'm not confused, but I'm, I'm like Gary. If we, if, can we legally do away with those 17,000?
I don't see why you can't legally do it.
We're gonna eat our PPTR with 17,000 cars, and we're not gonna send tax tickets out and get any tax off anyway.
That's exactly right.
That doesn't sound smart.
And it's raising the, the actual taxes on everybody else, me and you and all of us, about .31. The way we calculated it out, that's about what it's gonna go up.
Sam, is this gonna help anything on all those people that have totally dodged the taxes forever?
This ain't gonna help a bit on that.
Well, you mean, these pickups that are running around without tags on them don't have a title?
Now, we're, we're just talking about the vehicles that's worth under $1,000.
No, I'm talking, I'm asking him, are we gonna net gain off of these people that haven't been paying taxes? Forget about you, less than $1,000.
Joe, those, those people that run farm tags, the only way you're ever gonna get rid of that is do away with farm tag exemptions. That's the only way you're ever gonna do away with that. And I don't think that's gonna happen. But you're not gonna make these people buy tags on these big doleys if they don't want to. If they got any kind of land, they can throw a bale of hay in the back of them and get a farm tag.
But even though they're...
Your value will be $30,000 on this report, if it's a $30,000 vehicle.
You will still pay personal property tax on it, whether you run farm tags on it or not.
Yeah, you, yeah, they're taxed, yeah.
Well, how do they get in, how do they get in the system?
What do you mean, how do they get? Oh, if they don't have tags, I don't know if they're taxed or not.
No, they're not taxed. Well, they will be now, because they're titled, they'd be titled vehicles.
So, they weren't taxed. But under the title thing, under the title, we did pick up some above $20,000.
38 or something like that.
35 vehicles, we picked up like 35 vehicles in county above $1,000 in value.
How many did you pick up from 1,000 and over?
From 1,000 and over, I have to look.
1,000, uh...
Oh, I tried.
4,364.
But they will be getting a tag. They will be getting a...
They'll get tag, tax tickets, yeah.
Well, we'll have that number next Thursday, budget meeting.
You got anything else, Mr. Hale?
No, it's always been that we need to get those people that are not paying any personal property tax, driving $60,000 duly around. There's more of them than you believe. Everybody here knows.
I don't deny that. I know there's a lot of them. But I don't know how, the way we're doing it, I don't know how we're gonna tax them.
Okay, so, all it takes is, let's just say we're, you know, if I'm an individual, say, "There's no way to do this, so I'm not gonna pay taxes anymore. I just bought a used dump truck." Is the best thing for me to do is to never turn that title in, never record it with the state, don't buy a legal tag for it, and put a plastic tag on it.
Well, a lot of it has to do with you're, whether you're an honorable person, and that's, that's true.
Well, voluntary taxes didn't work for the Romans. Look what happened to them.
Right. They went down the crapper, we may be there behind them. I mean, but, this is like this boy that called me, we finally caught, so be on DMV stock. He hadn't paid taxes since 2000. I have warrant debts from 2003 forward. I've sent the sheriff out there two or three times to do distress seizures. They can't ever find anything. They called him at DMV, he called him, wanted to pay me $5 a month, and he got it paid. I said, "I'm not doing any payments for you. I mean, you haven't paid me since 2003. So, I haven't heard from you." I said, "You need to come in with substantial payment, at least $300, and I'm still not released, leaving the stop until it's paid full." And I haven't seen hide nor hurt. And that's the type of people you're dealing with. I mean, we didn't send the hit squad out and pick them up. Maybe that's what we need. They should send Big Bird out a little bit more. He does good on steel taps for us, at these restaurants that don't pay.
So, we'll, you know, without the 17, that's less than $1,000, we'll still be picking up 4,514 vehicles.
Yeah.
That's over $1,000, that will be getting personal property.
That's right.
And tax, tickets.
And don't confuse the personal property tax with the license fee.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause I, I think we're talking, I just hear different things. See, a lot of them, them doleys, that's, and they're worth over $1,000, and some of them's worth over 20. So, there's 150 vehicles in the county that's, that we're gonna pick up. It's over $20,000.
Yeah.
And that's probably some of them doleys.
I'm assuming doleys are...
This is a PPTR calculation. It doesn't count non-qualifying vehicles.
Right.
So, there's another list out there somewhere.
There's another list...
This is only the quali, this is only PPTR qualifying vehicles. There may, there may be some more than that.
That had tags on them.
Right.
So, you're...
That will be assessed tax.
So, you don't have the, the number of...
No, that number.
Just titled vehicles, over 1,000, over 20,000.
Right.
That's what we need to, that's what we need to look at.
7:30. 7:30?
Oh, seven. I thought it was seven. I got, I got two more meetings down there.
Don't worry, Sam, he'll supply breakfast if you buy, if you buy and bring it.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Linda Myers.
Now, this is easy, you guys. I got the response from my FOIA request of the salary schedule last week. However, it's not on the website, so I know about it, but the public does not know about it. So, if we could have something on the county website that says "Go to so-and-so to find the salary schedule," it would be much appreciated. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. I'll close citizens' time. We have no more people signed up to speak. Moving on with agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meeting of July the 22nd, 2014. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the minutes.
I have a second.
I'll say it.
Any correction or changes of the minutes? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained since I was absent.
I should aye.
Oh, God.
I missed, I missed Joe, too, sir.
In charge, motion passes six with one abstention. Payment of invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we pay the invoice, except one that's owed to me. Water view, I mean, water truck, Tila.
You wanna pull that one out, make that motion?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is any other invoice? I have a motion and a second, is any other invoice I'd like to be discussed. Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes seven zero.
And now we need a motion to make, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make the motion to pay the, the invoice that we pulled out from Mr. McGraw. Thank you.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes to pay that invoice. Okay, moving on, the agenda, old business. Mr. Dalton, we have any other thing under old business?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move right on into new business, Building and Grounds Committee report, recommendations.
Yeah, we met and discussed moving property on May Apple that we charged a thousand dollars as they had offered, and any costs associated with advertising or whatever on that piece of property.
Okay, we have a motion from the Building and Grounds Committee, it doesn't need a second, to accept Mr. Hoover's one thousand dollars of purchased May Apple lane right away, with the conditions that they agreed to pay all costs associated with that. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, this is the one that it's act, the House is actually sitting on the right away, they were here, okay?
Yes. Any other discussion? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda, it's a budget amendment, from the Budget Committee, or who's this one? This is not from the Budget Committee, is it?
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, we amend and appropriate a thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to the Commissioner of Revenue's budget for the cost of downloading DMV titled vehicle data.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, amend and appropriate one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, any further discussion? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, is anything else under new business? Okay, here and then, we have the informational package that's in your board package, everybody take a look at that.
Oh, we do have, y'all have a handout for that, excuse me.
Oh, got two, a couple of them.
Request to lose vehicles, be cleared surplus, except there's bids, those listed, minimum reserve that we ask for.
No bid on that, you, you have the truck.
Oh, did, but didn't meet the reserve.
Okay.
Before you make a motion on top of that, I would ask that GovDills has indicated we have the opportunity, if the bidder, high bidder, who's under reserve, to negotiate with them, that person, to come to that minimum bid that we sell, that we sell out in Austin.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we sell the vehicle, then give the, the high bidder on the other truck opportunity to match the, the bid on, to match the...
Minimum bid.
Minimum bid.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Here and then, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes seven zero. What about these two? Either one of them gotta be brought up? They're all laying here.
Uh, they're laying there, but we have kind of to find a number on this. This is the agreement, kind of agreement that we negotiated on the, with initial engineering building next door that we submitted to us, all that additional requests that we agreed to wait, consulting engineer firm, all the paperwork, the contract to pay. And the last item was LMRS last week, they go on employee, we filed a motion claim, we have a motion inspection for Chisel Building. We'll have a written report on the motion inspection.
Is that a planned, planned meeting, or what did they...
Well, that'd be referred to Building and Grounds Committee.
It'd be referred to fire and rescue.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
Uh, no, that was not a planned meeting. But actually, it's good inspection, heard that just now.
Mr. Dalton, any other business needs come for the board tonight? Does any board member have anything they want to bring up for the board?
I did, but I haven't, I spoke to Mr. Dalton about it.
Well, here and no other business to come before the board, I'll adjourn this meeting.